Oh, yeah. Trust me.
Really?
Oh, yeah. Yeah.
How many do you have?
I have three chairs inside that actual outside.
Oh, yeah. At least, yeah.
Right, yeah.
Yeah, at least that many.
And I always bring the drinks, the wine.
You do what?
I always bring the drinks. I kind of always bring a pool of the wine.
Oh, yeah. Still, that stuff, okay.
Which I bring.
I get it that.
No, I let you know on Saturdays.
All right. I'll have my coffee. No, I thought I would stop to. I can attract a little.
Just for now.
Oh, yeah. I mean, so I'm ready. Yeah.
Yeah. Try to be.
Can we talk to Jared about?
I bought.
Yes, please do.
I don't have to have them, but they do. They actually do help. So especially the morning when they're raining.
Yeah, because they really like to get that.
I have all of them.
I got it. Shrimp trimmers.
It's embarrassing, but I'm like, oh, that's nice.
Yeah.
Extension will hold the cut lines.
Yeah, I was bringing all of them.
Everything's been hard.
Yeah.
All right. So let's make it that on air. We'll get started. Okay, it looks like we're ready to go. So, good evening and welcome to the Thursday, June 23rd, 2022, meeting of Xenia City Council. Uh, we will open with the invocation led by Melissa Adams from Hope Hub. Is that correct?
Yes.
Followed by the Pledge of Allegiance led by Councilman Scribbins. If you could all please rise.
Jesus, I love you and I thank you for the opportunity to be here in this room. God, I thank you that you are good and that you are for us. And I thank you that you are God who's gone before us and you have prepared the way. Father, I thank you that we have the opportunity to live in a city that is for people and that loves you and we have the opportunity to love those around us. God, I pray tonight that your kingdom come and that your will be done in our hearts and in this meeting as it is in heaven. Jesus, I love you and I thank you in your name. Amen.
Amen. Amen.
Repeat after me.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Thank you, Ms. Adams. Thank you, Councilman Scribbins. This time we'll call the meeting to order and ask our city clerk for a roll call, please.
Vice President Urshel.
Here.
Councilwoman Sherman.
Here.
Councilwoman Dean.
Here.
Councilwoman Brann.
Here.
Councilwoman Dean.
Here.
Mayor Mays.
Here.
Here. On the agenda is approval of minutes from the June 9th, 2022 regular meeting. At this time, I'll entertain a motion to accept the minutes as written. Moved by Ms. Rebecca Dean, followed by a second.
A second.
By the mayor. Any additions, corrections, or changes to the minutes? All right, seeing none noted, I'll ask for a roll call to accept.
Vice President Urshel.
Aye.
Councilman Scribbins.
Aye.
Councilwoman Dean.
Aye.
Councilwoman Brann.
Aye.
Councilwoman Dean.
Aye.
Mayor Mays.
Aye.
President Smith.
Aye.
Motion carried.
Thank you. There's no special presentation scheduled for tonight's agenda. Next on the agenda is opportunity for audience comments. This is the opportunity for anyone in the audience who would care to come to the podium. Give us your name, address. Limit your comments three to four minutes. We have several people in the audience tonight. Anyone care to come forward? Did anyone sign the petition? Or the list?
But there is, there are two public hearings, three.
Okay, got it. All right. So we'll move on, um, to old business. Our first item in old business is ordinance 2022-19. This is tied on the public hearing. This is amending the official zoning map for the city of Xenia to rezone the property at 89 Lehman Street, which totals .43 acres, from an I-1 light industrial district to an R-2 two-family residential district. This is introduced by Mayor Mays at our last meeting.
Thank you, sir. I'd like to move for passage.
Move for passage by the mayor. Do we have a second?
I'll second that.
Seconded by Councilman Brannam. At this time, I will open up the public hearing regarding ordinance 2022-19 and invite anyone who would care to come to the podium and speak in favor of this amendment. Please come forward at this time. All right. If anyone would care to come to the podium and speak against amending the official zoning map to rezone this property, now's your opportunity. Seeing no one come forward, I'm going to close the public hearing on this one. Invite any questions or comments from colleagues or staff.
Mr. President?
Yes, sir. So I, I just like to commend this motion and I'm glad it's going to be happening. That's, that, um, piece of property has been a problem for us for quite some time. And, uh, uh, it's, it's doubtful it'll ever be used again from an industrial perspective. And to get someone residing in there would, would just help not only that street but that part of the, the bike path here where there's been a lot of bad activity going on. So I'm, I'm just really, really happy to see someone stepping forward and, and moving out on this.
All right. Thank you very much. Any other comments or questions? All right. Seeing none, ask for a roll call, please.
Vice President Urshel.
Aye.
Councilman Scribbins.
Aye.
Councilwoman Dean.
Aye.
Councilwoman Brannam.
Aye.
Councilwoman Dean.
Aye.
Mayor Mays.
Aye.
President Smith.
Aye.
Motion carried.
Thank you very much. Thank you for being here tonight. Um, next on our agenda is an ordinance for, uh, ordinance number 2022-20. This is also tied on the public hearing. This is amending Chapter 212 titled Ordinances, Resolutions, and Motions of the City of Xenia's Code. This is also introduced by Mayor Mays at our last meeting.
Thank you, sir. I will also move for passage on this.
Thank you. Move for passage by the mayor. Do we have a second?
Second.
Seconded by Councilman Scribbins. At this time, I will open the public hearing on ordinance 2022-20 and ask anyone who would care to come forward at this time to speak in favor of amending this ordinance. Now's your opportunity to do so. Okay? Seeing no one come forward on that. If anyone would care to come to the podium and speak against amending Chapter 212, now's your opportunity to do so. Okay. This time I'll invite any of colleagues or staff if they care to make a comment regarding, regarding ordinance 2022-20. All right. Lot of activity there. So we'll go ahead and ask for, um, I closed the public hearing, correct? Go into that already? Okay, public hearing, we'll close it on this ordinance. And for a roll call, please.
Vice President Urshel.
Aye.
Councilwoman Scribbins.
Aye.
Councilwoman Dean.
Aye.
Councilwoman Brannam.
Aye.
Councilwoman Dean.
Aye.
Mayor Mays.
Aye.
President Smith.
Aye.
Motion carried.
Thank you very much. Our next item is new business. It's Resolution 2022-K. This is establishing street lighting district number three, known as Summerbrook South, and declaring the necessity of improving city streets and public ways within street lighting district number three by the lighting thereof for years 2023 through 2027. This time I'll turn the podium over to, um, our acting city manager, Mr. Hallaway.
Thank you, Mr. President. As council is aware, the development out on the northeast side of town, Summerbrook, is underway with their, uh, first section there here recently. Arnold Development Company, the developer, has petitioned the city to, uh, put in a, a street lighting district for the subdivision that they're currently working on. Uh, they would pay for the initial installation of the lights and then the street lighting district would cover the cost of lighting repairs, electric maintenance going forward through Miami Valley Lighting. Um, the assessment will be $31.06 per lot, per year. Uh, staff is requesting passage of this resolution to establish the district to begin light assessments through 2027.
All right. Thank you for that report. Any questions for the city manager?
All right. I've got one question. Council President?
Yes.
Um, I was just making sure that this all went through Miami Valley Lighting, correct? Because I remember back when this initially was being proposed through Planning and Zoning Commission, that there were some talks back and forth and just making sure that the Arnold lights matched up to what Miami Valley Lighting would actually, um, maintain.
Yeah. The, the lights under this subdivision in this streetlight agreement are all under the agreement with Miami Valley Lighting, but not all citywide. Some of the lights citywide are still not with Miami Valley Lighting.
Okay.
That's what you're asking.
Perfect. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Thank you, Councilwoman Brannam. Anyone else have any comments, concerns? At this time, I'll seek a motion to establish the street lighting district. So moved by Councilwoman Brannam. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Seconded by the Vice President. Any additional comments?
Um, Mr. President?
Yes, sir.
Mr. President? Jared, nothing needed like tonight or the next week, but could you at some point, uh, maybe through our property management, come back and give us an understanding or grid of which portions of the city are under lighting maintenance agreements and which ones are?
Can do.
Okay. Maybe we could put that on. And then we've got a property management committee meeting coming up. If we could do it this, at that one or at the latest one after that.
Sounds good.
Right. Thanks.
All right. Thank you, Vice President. Any other comments or questions? All right. This time we'll proceed with a roll call, please.
Vice President Urshel.
Aye.
Councilman Scribbins.
Aye.
Councilwoman Dean.
Aye.
Councilwoman Brannam.
Aye.
Councilwoman Dean.
Aye.
Mayor Mays.
Aye.
President Smith.
Aye.
Motion carried.
Very good. Our next item under new business is item two, which is Resolution 2022-L. This is authorizing the purchase of two two-ton dump truck chassis through the ODOT Cooperative Purchasing Program and two dump bodies with spreaders and snowplow units through the Sourcewell Cooperative Purchasing Program. And again, at this time, I'll turn the floor over to acting city manager, Mr. Hallaway.
Thank you, Mr. President. Um, Public Service Department continues to try and extend the life of vehicles within their fleet, um, but staff feels it's necessary to, to move forward with replacing these two two-ton, two, two-ton dump trucks, um, which we've been putting off for a few years. Uh, the city's mechanic, uh, reports that both of these vehicles have failing emission systems, radiator systems, and, uh, severe corrosion throughout the vehicles. One of the dump trucks that's assigned to streets, um, 1904, also has transmission issues, which have been an ongoing problem. Uh, both of these vehicles are used year-round for hauling materials, uh, leaf collection in the fall, snowing and plowing in the winter, among other things. These were included in the CIP, uh, past year, 2022 year CIP for 175,000 each. Uh, unfortunately, the costs have gone up even through these bid programs. The costs are split between water and sewer, but they're increased to $207,068 per unit. So unfortunately, trending similarly to other vehicles and expenses we've seen just based on the, the current economy. Staff does have funds in the line due to pushing back several other vehicles that were in the CIP and plan to purchase this year. So we don't need an extra appropriation at this time. And the silver lining may come in 12 to 18 months when we get the vehicles, when we sell the used ones, because the used market is still really good. So hopefully it'll still be that way, uh, in early 2024, if that's how long it takes to get these vehicles. So, uh, staff is recommending that council pass Resolution 2022-LL, authorizing the purchase of two two-ton dump trucks through Stoops Freightliner, through the Ohio, or ODOT Cooperative Purchasing Program, um, and then two bodies, spreaders, and plows through KE Rose, through the Sourcewell Cooperative Purchasing Program, at a total price of $414,136.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Hallaway. Any questions for our acting city manager at this time? Yes, Councilman Scribbins?
Thanks, sir. Uh, it seems that we're playing catch-up. It started out at 96, now it's 110, and now it's a total of 414 for, for two. Uh, from 96 to, you know, it's just the way it is, I guess.
Yeah. Prices are increasing. We had, we had expected to pay 175 last year for, for both parts of the truck. So it's unfortunate, unfortunate timing.
Thanks, sir.
All right. Thank you very much. Keep in mind the timeline is a year.
Right.
So we'll just make do with what we have. So any other comments or questions? Any concerns from anyone? All right. This time I'll ask for a motion to authorize the purchase.
Got to have it.
Okay.
Been flying up and down my street, so I guess we gotta have a couple of those.
All right. I'll take that as a motion by Councilman Scribbins. Do we have a second?
I'll second that.
Seconded by Councilwoman Dean. At this time, I'll ask for a roll call, please.
Vice President Urshel.
Aye.
Councilman Scribbins.
Aye.
Councilwoman Dean. Aye.
Councilwoman Brannam.
Aye.
Councilwoman Dean.
Aye.
Mayor Mays.
Aye.
President Smith.
Aye.
Motion carried.
Thank you. Next on the agenda is Resolution 2022-M. This is establishing a pay plan for all compensated employee positions. At this time, I'll turn the floor back over to Mr. Hallaway.
Thank you, Mr. President. Uh, on May 3rd, voters of the city approved amendments to the city's charter, which include Article 10 covering personnel. As part of these amendments, the city charter requires that the Administrative Steering Committee now recommend a council, a pay plan. And so that's what this is. It's the formal recommendation that, of the, the charter changes there. The Administrative Steering Committee is made up of the three appointed officials and the clerk of courts from the municipal court. They met on June 7th and recommended keeping the pay grades and wage ranges the same as councils previously approved and carrying them over to this new pay plan. So there's no changes to the play, pay plan recommended at this time, rather it's formally adopting it via resolution.
All right. Thank you. All right. So at this time, I will, um, seek any questions or comments for Mr. Hallaway.
How frequently, Mr. President?
Yes, sir.
How frequently does the ASC meet?
Uh, they meet as needed. It's, it's probably twice a quarter on average, maybe. It's not, probably not monthly, but fairly frequently.
Is that good? Other questions for Mr. Hallaway? All right. Okay. This time I'll seek a motion to, um, vote for passage of this.
The new pay plan.
Pay plan.
Same.
Moved by the mayor. Do we have a second?
A second.
Seconded by Councilman Scribbins. Any additional comments? All right. This time I'll ask for a roll call, please.
Vice President Urshel.
Aye.
Councilman Scribbins.
Aye.
Councilwoman Dean.
Aye.
Councilwoman Brannam.
Aye.
Councilwoman Dean.
Aye.
Mayor Mays.
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carried.
Thank you very much. Next on the agenda is a public hearing. This is Resolution 2022-N. This is adopting the tax budget for the city of Xenia for fiscal year beginning January 1 of 2023 and authorizing the finance director to submit that budget plan to the Green County Auditor. Mr. Hallaway.
Thank you, Mr. President. Uh, the city charter and the uniform tax levy law both require that city council adopt a tax budget each year. Uh, the Green County Budget Commission uses the city's tax, tax budget to certify revenues back to the city, uh, projecting property taxes as in local government phones that, funds that the city will receive in the coming year. Uh, the tax budget does not authorize or allocate any funding. It's just a step in the budget process. Uh, currently, all the funds in the tax budget have positive ending balances, uh, but it is a draft, so there's still, uh, a lot of things will change as projections are finalized and expenses are, um, better estimated in, in the coming year. Upon completion of the tax budget, staff will proceed with development of the capital improvement plan for, to be submitted to council this fall, uh, in October, as well as the final annual budget, uh, for 2023. The capital improvement plan and budget process will continue to include the involvement of the Budget Finance Committee. Uh, so staff is requesting that council conduct a public hearing as required by law and then adopt the tax budget and authorize submission to the county prior to July 20th.
All right. Thank you very much. Any questions for Mr. Hallaway? And we got the email on that. Thank you very much. Okay. So at this time, I'm going to open the public hearing regarding your Resolution 2022-N. Um, this public hearing is regarding adopting the tax budget for the city of Xenia. So if anyone would care to come forward at this time and speak in favor of this tax budget, now's your opportunity to do so. If anyone would care to come forward and speak against our tax budget for 2023, now's your opportunity to do so. Okay. And just for clarity, I know we have a few people that signed to speak tonight. Uh, we had an opportunity for audience comments. Uh, you missed that, but, uh, as a courtesy, if anyone would care to address city council tonight, now's your opportunity to do it, because there's no other opportunity in our agenda to do that. So if you're here tonight and you'd like to speak to council, um, now's your opportunity to do that. And, and I know in the past, council comments were at the end of the meeting, but about a year ago, we kind of changed that, right? And we moved it to the beginning. Am I right? It's always right at the beginning. Okay. All right. So now's your opportunity. All right. Now's your opportunity, folks. If anyone would care to come forward, we'll give you that courtesy. No? Okay. All right. So at this time, I'm going to close the public hearing on Resolution 2022-N and invite any of my colleagues if they have any questions regarding this tax budget. Okay. Other than, thank you for the effort and Councilman Scribbins, go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. President. Uh, on the line items, uh, where, uh, would Parks and Recreation be? I don't see where that's squeezed in. Is that under CDVG or what?
Uh, so the 203 fund is technically the Parks and Recreation Fund. It's pretty much unfunded. There's not much of anything in there in terms of revenues or expenses. It kind of gets rolled into the general fund because it's such a small fund.
There's also, if you're talking about things like park maintenance, that would roll into the general fund. So there's a department within the general fund that, um, that houses all of those expenses related to park maintenance. The 203 fund is, is, uh, more special programming, things like the, you know, the Fourth of July that we're, we're about to have, um, hometown of Christmas, those types of things.
If that's the case, I don't see that budgeted. I mean, if we go do it next year, I don't see that budgeted for the Fourth of July or...
Are you looking at, uh...
In the 203.
The fund balance summary?
Right.
Yeah. So that's just the net change in balance. It's not actually showing expenditures here, showing beginning and ending. So there's $400 difference between revenues and expenses. So the actual expense amounts isn't reflected on this fund balance report. That's just showing the change in the fund balance.
Thank you, Mr. President.
All right. Thank you very much. It does get confusing. Yes, Councilman?
Ryan, can you just go over the, the timing of this and, and obviously, this, this is something that the counties requested from the municipalities within the county and that's tied to specific actions that they're taking on their part. Can you just briefly go over that in terms of, as they receive this, they're using this for what purposes? Yeah. So, so they receive this, uh, tax budget. I think it's due the 21st of July. Uh, we'll provide it certainly before then. Um, and then the, the auditor has a timeframe where he can review what we've presented and he holds basically a hearing for us to come over. Right. And he'll ask us any questions that he may have about what's been prepared. We'll typically ask about whether or not there's any available inside millage. Correct. The answer is pretty much always no. There's 10 mills total for the city of Xenia and nobody's ever giving up their inside millage. So, but we'll usually go through that process. Um, he'll, like I said, he'll ask any questions, clarify anything, um, let us know if he has any concerns with anything that he sees, and then he'll usually use that, um, in the process for him certifying rates to us. So later in the year, he'll certify, or he'll give us, um, a listing of the rates and what they would be. Um, and when I'm talking rates, specifically property tax rates. And then we'll bring those back to council for council to accept the rates that are provided by the county auditor. So this, I, I don't know that there's, I don't know that there's a ton of influence that this tax budget has and what the county auditor ultimately does, but we're statutorily, statutorily required to go through this process of submitting the budget to him. And so folks in the, in the public, there's, there's a certain amount of property tax millage that can be, uh, done without a, a, a vote of the populace, and we call that the inside millage. And the county, uh, administration actually gets to help, uh, allocate that out amongst the various county, municipal, school entities. And unless we provide this to them, we could default on the ability of getting some of that inside millage. Exactly. And, and like I said, it's 10 mills that you, that can be assessed essentially without a vote, and the city currently receives 3.2 of that 10 mills and the others divided up primarily between the schools and the county. Right. And that inside millage stays with the actual appraisal of the property versus the appraise, appraisal at a particular point in time? Correct. So as property values increase, inside millage, uh, it, it, it's taxed based on the new value provided by the county auditor, not like voted millage, which is, uh, related to the timeframe at which the mo, voted millage was actually passed. It's kind of frozen at those rates. Right. So this is important for us to provide information. Even if we don't obtain additional inside millage, it allows us to petition for what we have. Yes. Yeah. We, we absolutely have to provide that or else, um, we would both be in conflict with what's required by the law, but also in danger of losing that inside millage. Yeah. Okay. Thank you.
All right. All right, thank you very much. This time, I'll seek a motion to adopt the tax budget.
Senator.
Moved by the mayor. Do we have a second?
I'll second that.
Seconded by Councilman Dean. Any further discussion? Moving on, we'll ask for a roll call, please.
Vice President Hertzel.
Aye.
Councilman Scrivens.
Aye.
Councilwoman Dean.
Aye.
Councilman Branham.
Aye.
Councilwoman Dean.
Aye.
Mayor May.
Aye.
President Smith.
Aye.
Thank you, our next item is a procedural motion, which is amending the rules of council. This time, I'll turn the floor over to Madam Law Director.
Good evening. I am presenting this on behalf of the Legislative Review and Government Affairs Committee, who reviewed this proposed amendments at their May meeting. With the adoption of the charter, there are, of course, a number of changes that we needed to make, both to our codified ordinances and the rules of council, to bring them in line with those voter-approved amendments. So, many of the changes that were made to the rules of council are because of those charter amendments. There are no administrative motions anymore. Under the charter, there's now ordinances, resolutions, and procedural motions. The process for each of those three is different, so your rules of council were updated to reflect that. The votes required for passage of ordinances, resolutions, emergency ordinances, and then emergency ordinances for appropriations, was also set by charter, so that is reflected in these amendments as well. One of the, a couple of the big changes, I won't get into too much detail on the little things. We are recommending an amendment to Section 302. A meeting can have different sessions. You can have a work session. We would consider this our regular session as a part of the meeting. You can have an executive session. So, one of the things we're suggesting in Section 3, particularly Section 302, is to allow the regular meeting time to start earlier. That way, if council wanted to have a work session before your regular session, you could start your meeting at 5:00, at 5:30, hold that work session. We did go ahead and require that the regular session, which is what we're doing right now, continue to start at 6:00. That's the time the public expects to be here, that's the time they expect to be able to see it on TV. So, we did keep that requirement, that the regular sessions start at 6:00, but you could have a work session before that. As far as the procedures for regular meetings, one thing we are suggesting is removal of a separate item on your agenda for reports of boards and commissions. One thing that we've noticed is a lot of times, when you report on what has occurred at your board or commission, it's something council has already taken action on. So, you're reporting on something that you've already voted on. So, what the committee is suggesting is that we add reports to council comments. If any of you chair a council committee or a board or commission, and there's something that came before that board, commission, committee, that has not already been presented to council, that would be your chance to report on that to the rest of your council members. The other big change that we made, the current charter, Article 4, which addresses city council, has reasons that a council member can be removed from office. What it does not do is outline a process. How does that work? There's no process outlined. So, when we first did your rules of council in Section 9, your code of conduct, we tried to address that missing part of the charter. With the amendments that are slated to be on the agenda on August 2nd, the charter amendments, that oversight in Article 4 has been addressed. The reasons for forfeiture, for removal from office, remain the same as they always were in Article 4, but there's now process outlined in that article as to how that works. So, in Section 9 of your rules of council, one of the things that the committee is recommending is, I think the best way to describe it is kind of dial down the censure. Censure would basically be used by council to reprimand an individual council member for some improper behavior. So, there's no due process concerns, it's a simple slap on the wrist. So, those were the changes that were made to Article 9, to kind of dial that process back a bit, recognizing that we have those amendments to Article 4 on the ballot in August. Section 11, one of the things that we will be presenting to you at your first meeting in July, is a rerate of Title 8, that of the Administrative Code, that is the Board and Commissions Code. Again, with the changes to the charter, there were some changes made. We have had previous discussions about what boards and commissions this council wants. So, with that, one of the recommendations in Title 8 is going to be getting rid of EDAB, the Economic Development Advisory Board. We are recommending that that be replaced with an Economic Development Standing Committee of Council. I will tell you, in the original discussions on your rules of council, there had been discussion about having that, but because of EDAB, we did not make that a separate standing committee. I think that's the majority, I tried to hit the major changes. Mayor May is the chairwoman of that committee, so if there's anything she would like to add?
Yeah, I've covered everything. I think the only thing that I, when we talked about removing council, are the reports of committee, just making sure that we do take the time to be transparent with our citizens, and be accountable to each other, that we are reporting the things that we're meeting on, even though that's not part of our agenda formally, to make sure we use our council comments to report back what we're doing.
And I'd be happy to answer any question.
All right, thank you. Any questions for the law director?
Mr. President.
Yes, sir.
Thanks, Jeff. I sit on the committee with Mayor May's of this Legislative Review and Government Affairs Committee, and just want to thank the law director. We're moving to streamline how we operate, how we do business for the people, and this is essential to doing that.
Very good, thank you very much. Other comments or questions?
So, Mr. President, so, some approval, we'll need a nomination for a, yeah, a chair and two council members for the new Economic Development Committee.
Correct.
And we had discussed doing that at your first meeting in July, when we present for introduction that rewrite to Title 8.
Are you okay with waiting until July? Okay, all right, so that'll be our first meeting in July, that's July 14.
Correct.
At 6:00. All right, any other questions for the law director? At this time, I'll seek a motion to amend the rules of council. Moved by Councilwoman Dean, thank you. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Seconded by the vice president. Seeing other comments, we'll ask for a roll call, please.
Vice President Hertzel.
Aye.
Councilman Scrivens.
Aye.
Councilwoman Dean.
Aye.
Councilman Branham.
Aye.
Councilwoman Dean.
Aye.
Mayor May.
Aye.
President Smith.
Aye.
Thank you, next on our agenda is procedural motion, appointing a member to the Board of Recreation Arts and Culture Activities. So, this time, I'm going to turn the floor over to our mayor.
Thank you. We would like to nominate Ms. Hiba Looksey. She is here this evening. She would be the representative from the Xenia High School, and she is not a voting member, but she is a wonderful representation of the high school. She's the president of Student Council, vice president of National Honor Society, president of Ohio's Business Professionals of America, co-founder of Xenia High School's First Writing Club, and the outreach director for illuminate business. She is, she's on top of, she's also involved in the Chemistry Club, Spanish Club, Model UN, Garden Club, and Ensemble Member, so, and all this while she's maintaining a 4.0 GPA. We are thrilled to have her, that she is interested, she has been recommended by the counselor, Amy Bates. So, at this time, I would like to go ahead and make a motion that we appoint her as our ex officio member of BRCA.
All right, thank you very much, we have a motion. Do we have a second?
I'll second that.
Seconded by Councilwoman Branham. Is she here tonight?
She is here, yes.
Oh, would you care to come to the podium? To embarrass you. Our BRCA meetings aren't televised, but we'd like everyone to see you, and we've not got the vote yet, we just like to welcome you and your involvement. I know you've been at our meetings before, and thank you for everything that you're doing, for that. Council and the city values the relationship with Xenia Community Schools, this is just one part of that relationship, so we can't thank you enough for your opportunity to serve with us on BRCA, and I know the mayor of BRCA is quite busy, and they'll certainly appreciate your help come this year, so thank you very much. Does anyone have any questions for?
It's a pleasure to see you step forward. National Honor Society, Chemistry Club, Student Council, Garden Club, I mean, we got the top of the crop.
Thank you.
Very good, we're very excited for you. We have a member of BRCA in the audience, too. Correct, Ethan, thank you for being here tonight. All right, so thank you very much. At this time, we'll go ahead and get a roll call, please.
Vice President Hertzel.
Aye.
Councilman Scrivens.
Aye.
Councilwoman Dean.
Aye.
Councilman Branham.
Aye.
Councilwoman Dean.
Aye.
Mayor May.
Aye.
Aye, thank you. We weren't sweating that, we didn't think that, we're close ones, so, thank you so much, and thanks for being here. Our next item is also a procedural motion. This is approving tonight's schedule of bills, and they amount of $476,000. At this time, I'll turn the floor over to Mr. Duke for any other discussion.
Thank you, Mr. President, I have nothing to note on the bills this evening.
All right, thank you very much. Any questions for Mr. Duke? All right, this time, I'll ask for a motion to pay the bills. Okay, I think we had the same time, so Councilwoman Dean, seconded by Councilwoman Dean, thank you. Any discussion? All right, this time, I'll get a roll call, please.
Vice President Hertzel.
Aye.
Councilman Scrivens.
Aye.
Councilwoman Dean.
Aye.
Councilman Branham.
Aye.
Councilwoman Dean.
Aye.
Mayor May.
Aye.
President Smith.
Aye.
Thank you very much. Also, I'd be very messed if I didn't mention, we have Sergeant Arms tonight. We have, in our audience, is our new police chief. Chief students, so thank you. Thanks for the service, we appreciate you being here tonight. All right, at this time, we have opportunity for appointed official reports. We'll start with the law director tonight.
I just have one thing, I want to remind the public, this July 4th will be the first holiday, that the use of consumer-grade fireworks is permitted under state law. There are restrictions under the Ohio Fire Code. We have been pushing that out on our Facebook page, you can read that, there's a handout posted on the city's website, reminder that the times that fireworks are allowed are 4:00 to 11:00 PM. 1:00 AM, midnight, not okay. There are severe criminal penalties if you violate the regulations that have been put out by the state fire marshal. So, I would encourage anyone that's planning to use consumer-grade fireworks for their celebration this year, to get on the city's website, review those guidelines on permitted distances, what's allowed, what not's allowed, so you can have a fun, safe holiday, and not have to worry about anyone getting in trouble. And happy 4th.
All right, thank you very much. Any comments or questions for the law director tonight? All right, thank you. All right, Mr. Finance Director.
Thank you, Council President. I regret that I was unable to attend the last council meeting, where council voted to renew my employment contract, and I did want to voice my appreciation for you doing that. It's a pleasure to work with each of you and city staff as well. Also, wanted to mention that we got notice today that the state auditor has accepted our financial audit from our independent audit firm, Plattenburg and Associates. That's good news, there were no findings in the audit, there were no material weaknesses or deficiencies, so those are very good things, and I would expect that we most likely will be awarded at some point from the auditor state or the Government Finance Officers Association, and so we'll keep council in the loop as we're awarded anything from those entities. And that's all I have, this evening.
All right, thank you. Any questions for Mr. Dirton tonight? All right, you're all finished, thank you. All right, and last but not least, is our absentee manager, Mr. Hallway, thank you.
Yeah, thank you. The city manager's office, along with the finance office, kicked off Citizens Academy last week, and we have two Citizens Academy attendees, Mary Amlin and Nancy McPeak, in the audience tonight, so I wanted to shout, shout out, give them a shout out for their attendance in Citizen Academy and regularly attending council meetings, so, welcome. And then, I just want to remind the public about our Red, White &amp; Blue Block Party next Friday. It'll be downtown from 3:00 to 8:00 PM, and then at Shawnee Park from 5:00 PM through the fireworks, which begin at 10:00. So, there'll be a lot of activities in town that weekend, be patient with the traffic, and hopefully, people can come out. That is all.
All right, thank you so much. Any questions or comments for Mr. Hallway? And the two members of Citizens Academy that are here, would either one of you care to come to the podium and express your enthusiasm? So much for enjoying the Citizens Academy. No pressure, no pressure, but thank you.
It's a new day.
You know I'm going to call you out, so, yeah.
I'm Nancy McPeak, and I have attended every Citizens Academy, and I learn something new every time. And it's, I just wish more people would attend. You obtain a lot of knowledge by coming to the academy, and then by coming to the council meetings, you learn things, you know, learn the truth.
All right, thank you so much.
Thanks for letting me attend again.
Thank you for being here, really appreciate your attendance at our meetings. All right, if we don't have anything else for Mr. Hallway, we're going to move on to reports of boards, commissions, and committees. So, our first and only report is Board of Zoning Appeals, and that's Councilman Branham.
I guess this is the last time we report this one, so. We had two cases at our past meeting, we had to actually meet a little bit earlier to accommodate Brian's schedule. So, we had a variance to allow a 10-by-12 shed to be built in a side yard, contrary to the Land Development Code, required by accessory buildings to be located in the rear yard at 1477 Bado Avenue, and that was approved. His backyard was only literally like 12-foot deep, so that's another inheritance of our forefathers, of just having a weird, odd property boundaries. We also had a variance to allow a 12-by-16-foot shed on a vacant lot, contracted the code requirement, contrary to the contract requirement, that an accessory building must be on the same lot as the building home it serves, and increasing by the applicant's total accessory building square footage to 962 square feet, including an existing garage exceeding the code's maximum 720 square feet, adjacent parcel to 201 Fayette Street. And that one was, how do I put this, one variance was denied, and the other one was accepted. So, basically, the homeowner's intention is to actually combine those two property plots, and if they combine those two property lots, BZA actually approved them to build their shed on the rear side of the yard, not the side yard, like they had one. So, they accommodated the applicant pretty well in that situation, and that's it.
All right, thank you. Any questions or comments for Mr. Branham regarding BZA? All right, thank you. Next on our agenda is opportunity for council comments. At this time, we'll start back over with Mr. Branham.
I haven't done, nothing further than that.
All right, thank you. All right, Councilman Dean?
Thank you, I don't have anything to add, either.
All right, thank you. Councilwoman Dean?
Happy Fourth of July, see you on next Friday.
All right, thank you very much. Councilman Scrivens?
Thank you, Mr. President. Few items I'd like to bring to the council's attention. Number one, I'd like to see the, he was gone, the public service director and the city engineer to get the crack seal crew to crack it. I mean, it's mid-June, and I haven't seen them crack seal, not one crack. When we go get started? I mean, pretty soon, it cracks out, and then it's gone, and then it's time to patch. Well, I want to see them do some patching, I ain't seen no patching. Am I, am I the only one that's not seeing things, or what? It's supposed to be budgeted, here it is, mid-June. Point one, no crack seal, no pothole repair, especially on my street, now that I've got dump trucks running up and down every 15 minutes. At least fill the potholes in, so I don't have to hear the "bloop, bloop, bloop, bloop", it's ridiculous. So, there's a job that's not being done, and certain people are not happy. What's the mystery on the streets to be repaired this year? I know East Market is to be repaired between North Detroit and North Columbus. I know East Second is supposed to be repaired between North Columbus and, I think, Leach, and everything else is a mystery. Are we still repairing Lower Bell, Upper Bell, is that being finished between Allison and Peach Pipe? Anybody take a look at that?
Yep.
Do you want to address that?
I don't remember the date it's supposed to be completed, but the last section of Belbrook there, up to Allison from Mommy, or...
Mommy, yes, Peach Pipe, Peach Pipe.
Yeah, that will be done this year, if it...
Okay.
Oh, dates, sorry.
Can you give us a priority list on when, who, what? People are asking me, when are you going to get to my street? I don't want to tell them 10 years from now, because I'd be telling them almost the truth.
Yeah, I, we can, I don't remember what's on our website, but we can make sure it's clearly laid out, all the streets that are planned.
Yeah, I mean, all of them are red, according to the PCI, maybe a few are yellow, and just a couple are green, so, I mean, we have to establish a priority at some point. We have our arteries done, I'll give you that, okay? Now, the people in the Platts want their streets, at least, pothole, crack seal. I was on Capistrano today, and I have to amend myself. I did see the crack seal crew, they went up Capistrano, that's a dead end, they stayed a few minutes, and they went the other way. Crack seal's still on the back of the truck, and I'm looking at cracks on Capistrano. Something is not being done. Now, I did see some yellow paint sprayed around, that helps, a little paint helps the place out a whole lot. I want to compliment Councilman Herschel and his crew, because they paint up, fix up, clean the place up, make the place look like something. I mean, this is where we live, this is where we spend our lifetime, and we're half-baking it, and a lot of people are not happy. There are few nuisances that are not being abated, and they've been ongoing, and I'm the one taking the beating. They're, "Scrip, when you go get this cleaned up?" Well, I call Fred, Fred comes out, and Fred leaves. Situation remains painted. I still look like Joe Donut. I can't get the streets cracked seal, I can't get the streets pothole fixed, I can't get the nuisances abated. You don't need me. And then, I want to thank the community for their celebration of the Juneteenth Freedom Day. There's one thing, there's a difference between freedom and independence, and people should learn about that, and don't be afraid of it, okay? So, I have enough said with that, and then we need to like move forward with that. I want to compliment Councilman Herschel again, Vice President Herschel. He and his crew led a charge to paint the bathroom at Lexington Park. I've been back in Xenia for 34 years this December, and that bathroom, aside from the mural that some fraternal or community group had done, has had no activity at all, period. Water is there, we water the gardens, the sewer stub is there, it ends there, and then we have a portage on it. So, the priorities have to be shaken up, and that's what I'm here to do, is shake the priorities up. I want to see some action, and I don't want to be in mummy tape when action happens. So, I just want to let that be known, Mr. President. We're going to get a few of these streets repaired, but it's a mystery as to the rest of them, and I invite you to come and ask your government, when is your street going to be repaired? Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. All right, next up is Madam Mayor.
Thank you. Starting on the 10th, I was able to attend and speak at Chief Stute's swearing-in, that was a really moving ceremony, and I was honored to be a part of it, so thank you and congratulations, and we enjoyed the reception afterwards. Then, on the 13th, participated also at Chief Person's retirement to get together, again, I had an opportunity to speak, several other members of council were there, and thank you, and it was, again, it was a great, great afternoon, great evening, seeing so much support for him. And it was, again, it was a great, great afternoon, great evening, seeing so much support for him. June 18th was the big lemonade day. There was a proclamation that went out for that, and it was really great to see some of the kids participating in that. I know we had some friends who participated in that, and they got really excited about. The mayor said we had to, and I apologize to the parents if their kids were that kids. But it was a really fun thing that the kids got to do. And then also wanted to congratulate, actually, my own church, Main Hill Baptist Church. That was their 75th anniversary. 75 years of the church being in this community and being a part of the community, and that is all God's goodness there. On the 20th, I was able to go over to Faith Community United Methodist. They were welcoming the Fuller Center Bicycle Adventure Group. They have been biking over 1,300 miles. They started just north of New Orleans. And they make stops along the way. There's, the Fuller Center has housing projects that are happening. They stop, they work for a day, do different projects. They were ending near Cleveland. Their last house was in Aurora they were going to be helping with. And then different churches house them each night. So, it was a really interesting evening to meet these people from all over the country and to hear their heart for missions, to hear their heart for the small communities and just being a helping hand. That group has raised over $500,000, and that, really, 100% of that was going towards these housing projects, which is incredible. They raised sponsors, and it's just a really neat group. And then this morning, I had an opportunity to meet with John Duffy and Molly Halick from Kettering Health. Mr. Duffy oversees the mission and ministry of Kettering Health, and he is working on putting together a community health plan, doing some focusing in on Xenia and surrounding area. So, really interesting meeting. I was very excited to hear some of their vision, but really, they wanted to hear from Xenia and what's going on here. There's a few other people that they'd like to meet with. They don't want to set the vision for us. They want to hear from us and how can they be a part of it. So, very good meeting. That is all I have at this time. Oh, I do want to remind everybody about, again, 4th of July, July 1, our block party. I know that Mr. Hallway mentioned it, but there's going to be so much to do. There's five or six churches that are putting together kids' games and activities, athletes in action. The Y will be there also with different activities, lots of food trucks. There's going to be a car show, and then the Vintage Toy Store is putting together a pretty significant toy show that will be on Detroit Street between Second and Main. Couple hundred vendors, I believe, 300 vendors of toy, toy show people. So, it's going to be a great evening. Please come out for downtown and then head to the park. If you have not been a part of our fireworks evening, then you have missed out. So, it is an incredible evening. We're going to be hosting several dignitaries that evening that I'm really excited about. Who have not had a chance to come, they're coming this year, and really looking forward to that.
All right. Thank you very much. Any questions for the mayor? And then, not to put you on the spot, but, Mr. Hallway, can you explain to people why we're doing this activity on July 1 rather than July 4?
Yeah. Yeah. So, traditionally, we've always kept our 4th of July event on the first Friday of July. So, that changes each year depending on the actual, you know, date, calendar day of the first Friday of July. So, yeah, this Friday, or this year, it's July 1. I think it's the earliest it's been in July, but the city's holiday is actually the 4th of July, which is that Monday. So, the offices will still be open on Friday, even though traffic will be a little crazy. And then Friday, or Monday, the 4th, will be when the city observes the holiday.
As parents, it works out great when the fireworks start till 10 o'clock, and you have all day Saturday to recover from the himself. It's the ideal family show.
So, we've seen, there's just comments that I saw on social media. The savings is numerous by having it on July 1 versus not having it on a holiday, both for overtime and holiday pay, that type of thing.
Yeah. This year, you'll see savings. You won't always see those savings in the future depending on if the holiday event falls on the actual holiday. So, there will be less holiday pay and, you know, associated with the event this year, even though the same number of employees will be working it.
Right, right. So, we used to have first Fridays in Xenia, for those that aren't familiar with that. And that, that basically, that committee kind of dissolved itself. It was just a few volunteers that, after four or five years, just kind of gave up on that due to lack of volunteers. The city did not disband that group. There's talk of that, oh, the city got rid of it. We did not. Actually, we've stepped up to bring the 4th of July program back, that festival. So, I just, I just wanted to make clarity out there for people that, why we're doing it on July 1, not on Monday, July 4. So, you can celebrate the holiday a couple times. So, that's a good thing about that. All right. Thanks, Mayor Mace. And at this time, I'll turn it over to Vice President Herschel.
Sure. I got to attend a seminar in Attorney General's Office on sealing of, the new law for the sealing of felonies and misdemeanors. And I think in the middle of COVID last year, this was passed last January, that a lot of folks missed this. But we got a lot of folks in our community that have had issues 10, 20 years ago. And a felony conviction 10 or 20 years ago can just limit your job opportunities and your, just a whole wealth of things. Even though you've worked hard to bring your life back, it just inhibits you from moving forward. And so, the state legislature and the governor signed and approved the law to allow an expedited process with that. They're using law students at state universities to facilitate that. And I want to meet here in the future with the county Public Defender's Office. So, Madam Law Director, I just wanted to say I'd like to get together with you and have some discussions about that and see if we can meet. I would love to see our public defender put on a seminar for the public in terms of how you would proceed with that and what the steps are. And once again, they're looking to see that you've worked hard in your life and that you're making a positive impact in your family and your community to do that. And I believe, and I haven't, and I haven't spoken about this with you previously, but I believe there's also an opportunity to seal misdemeanors too, which would be at the municipal court level, right? So, I'd just like to discuss that with you too, if we had folks that would like to have misdemeanors sealed here. So, obviously misdemeanors are at the municipal court level, and the felonies are at the county police level and the county level too. So, anyways, more to come on that, but I think that will just be a very freeing thing for a number of folks in our, in our, in our community. And I just let you know, as I've been working with people, talking to folks, I run into multiple, multiple folks. As I said, hey, there's lots of job opportunities. And they said, yeah. Well, the first question I get is, I've got a felony, you know? And things go pretty silent after that point. And I'm not talking about something last year or the year before. I'm talking about things way distant. I mean, folks are in their 40s that had a bad moment when they were 21-years-old. And 20 years later, they're still, they're still paying the price for that. So, anyways, more to come on that. We've got a new president of the Xenior Association Churches and Ministries. So, Pastor Todd Martin from Liberty Worship Center.
All right.
He's going to be heading that up and looking forward to working with him. And just another item that's coming up there with the faith community. August 14th, Pastor Chaz from Home Church has been, he just felt led that we needed to have, in the midst of everything's going on, we need to have a time of community worship in our city. And he just got out and started talking to various pastors, and he has 16 churches signed up for that. So, I believe that we're probably looking at a couple of thousand at least folks who want to come together and have a common worship time. And this is churches from the north end of town, south end of town, east end of town, west side of town. I think it's going to be a really refreshing time for us here in the city. More to come. He's got another 20 churches still on his list to contact. And so, we're going to have to find someplace very, pretty large, whether that's Shawnee Park or the football stadium with the school or out at the fairgrounds. So, but it's, yeah, it's going to be a big, a big event. So, anyways, more to come. But I'm just, I'm just really encouraged to see that all the pastors I've been speaking to, they are, they're all ready for this, and would love to see us come together as a, as a community and worship together. There are so many things this year that are dividing us, that we desperately need some things that we can all come together around. So, a time to worship together and glory God is a good time to do that. I know we've been working at Lexington Park for over a year now. Publicly, and I've talked to a lot of policemen.
At least publicly.
Doing a lot of other things. I guess I would just say to the community that it's going to be incremental, small steps. The one we've, and just to let you know, one of the big things, there was some pretty bad behavior, not necessarily by folks from Xenia, earlier this spring out at the park, and fairly large numbers of folks. And so, we got to stop that and put an end to that before we start putting in some investments on the move-forward part. So, some of the work that's going to be done here over the next month or so is principally to address that, but that's not going to be the end of it. Other things are coming. We had hoped, we had a commercial corporation, we were hoping that would be making a fairly significant investment into the, into the basketball courts, and it looks like that's not going to proceed. That's unfortunate. But we did find out that we had applied for the Lowe's Community Grant, where Lowe's is going to award a grant of roughly $100,000 to 100 communities in the nation. And we're, I contacted them last week. We're in the finalist list of 120. So, that's out of a couple of thousand applications. They're going to make their final announcement on July 20. And so, if we're awarded that grant, we'll be able to, we've written that grant specifically up around Lexington Park. And we'll be able to make a lot of significant improvements coming out of that. There's some other work we've talked about at the basketball courts. I'd like to wait until that grant decision, because we may be able to proceed with the original plans with the basketball court if we get that grant awarded. And if not, there's another plan with a much reduced, you know, topic on the courts. But anyways, so I just want to let you folks know about that. I've been out there multiple times, talking to folks that are out there right now. And folks really want to see improvements out there, and they want to get behind this. And I guess I'd just say that I know we got a lot, we got a lot of the community parks, but neighborhood parks, but this is, this is one of the few that we've had a lot of folks in the city come and ask us to participate with them. So, more to come. I just want to say kudos to the folks at Bridges of Hope went out. And when we had all that 90-degree-plus weather, they were out there every day, painting and siding and cleaning up the bathroom. And you know what? There's a lot of folks, even though they have a hard time in life, they have a lot to give. They have a lot of skill as well. And it's just amazing. We've got folks that have amazing painters, folks with construction background, landscaping background, all kinds of things. So, they've been hard at work there. They cleaned up the public parking lot number two and have been maintaining that. They've been back out at the Bike Hub and done a lot of painting and cleanup after this last year and some of the other parts of the bike trail. And this weekend, we're going out to work at the, another piece of property the city owns to get it ready prior to sale. And we'll be doing a lot of cleanup with that. So, I just encourage you folks, if you see folks out there, we work on Saturdays and weekdays, and you see a group out there, just stop by and tell them, "Thanks."
Give them a gator.
Okay? They're not getting paid big bucks, and they're working as hard as they can on that. And much better to have them doing this kind of work.
Right.
They're doing a lot, they're doing a lot of cleanup at, at the cemetery there next door to the shelter. And the Cemetery Foundation said that they just don't have money, clean resources. So, they're overdoing a lot of cleanups. As a matter of fact, the next two weeks, they're going to be out actually starting to clean the tombstones over there. And so, I think there's just some good things. When you challenge folks to step it up, that can happen as well too. So, yep, that's all I got.
All right. Thank you very much. All right. And I just would again mention the July 1 activities. Where would you recommend parking for that? Town Square?
Town Square's a good spot. The city parking lots are around downtown, but the main intersections will be closed. So, you'll have to.
Fieldhouse.
Yeah. Fieldhouse is a good spot to park. Masonic Center. Yeah. Lot 2, Lot 3 over, you know, near the old senior center. So, there is adjacent parking. Even at the city administration building, there's parking behind here and on Second Street that should be available. So.
And where should people go to view the fireworks? What section of Shawnee Park?
It'll be very full. So, any section of Shawnee Park, you can get a chair down or a blanket or whatever is going to be a good section.
Yeah. All right. Very good. All right. And thank you for that. And again, my thanks to the city staff for putting this on. Our reputation for excellent firework show is out there. So, thank you again. We have no executive session scheduled for this evening, nor do we have a work session. So, at this time, I will seek a motion to adjourn. Moved by Councilwoman Dean. Do we have a second? I'll second that. Seconded by Councilman Branham. Can I get a roll call, please?
Aye.
Aye.
Councilwoman Dean.
Uh.
Councilman Branham.
Aye.
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 Aye. All right. Thank you very much.